Sometimes I lash out.
Okay.
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 Sometimes I lash out.
You have the Mark Wellman Adventure Day, our Sparks, the Fishing Day, and numerous walks that occur here. I do have members from the Sparks Rotary here this evening. I think one of them would like to come up as well and discuss this before you take a vote, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Who wants to speak for the Rotary Club?
That would be Mr. Mike Day.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi there.
Is this on? I don't have to touch or but anything?
We can hear you.
All right, very good, thanks. I'm Michael Day, I'm president of the Sparks Rotary Club, and we, if, can I ask for our Sparks Rotarians to stand so you can at least see who's here? Could all the Sparks Rotarians please stand?
And actually, we have several Rotarians up here on the dais.
Yeah, I know, they didn't stand either, but that's okay. But we are on behalf of Sparks Rotary, I am here to offer $80,000 towards the planning, development of this marina at the Sparks Marina Playground, which will be an all-inclusive or inclusive playground. And I've been working with Don Welsh, too, who I want to at least mention and recognize, he's been really the driving force for this project. So we are extremely excited about the possibilities and the completion of this project, and it is our honor to be able to offer $80,000 for this, for this program. And Chris has done a super job, so I want to thank him, too, for his work on this project. We want to thank you for the $80,000, and Ed, I'm sure you want to say a few words here.
You know, this is, this is kind of overwhelming in a way. It's, it's, we've never seen this kind of donation from, number one, from a private charitable organization for the City of Sparks, but as a Sparks Rotarian, this is, makes my heart very proud. My buddy started crying, so he's gonna make me start crying. But the bottom line is, you guys, you've done such great work, you've worked so hard at it, and we at the City of Sparks are greatly appreciative. It's allowed us to think a little bigger for this, this playground, and I think we're gonna talk about, at the end of the meeting, some ways we can maybe speed this thing up for you, because we want to see that out there and, and people enjoying it. And as Don was telling us some of his stories prior to the meeting about his daughter who's special needs, that it's, what it does for the kids is, is overwhelming. And if you're there to see it, it's, it's a pretty fun thing to see. So, good job Sparks Rotarians.
Absolutely.
And it was pretty awesome. And then we're gonna have some help from our president of the Sparks Centennial Sunrise, Christopher Dare, in some of the labor and also upkeep on that park as we go forward.
Absolutely. So we are partners with, if, sorry, didn't mean to jump in.
Please, go ahead.
No, just that we're, I wanted to point that out, that we are partnering with Sparks Centennial Sunrise Club in the, for future maintenance and upkeep repair with Rotarians at Workday in the future. So we are really excited that together we can be able to do this.
Mr. Dare.
I want to say, just even as Ed was sharing, it kind of brings some of our hearts together in the sense of how much we care for Sparks and what we do for City Council, but then also as a Rotarian, and it's awesome to be able to walk in this and stand together. Thank you for taking the time to put together the details to make sure we get it done right. And I wanted to say that real loud. Chris has done a great job, our parks and works done a great job, but really Rotarians, thank you. And it just shows, what's happened at that marina really becomes the gem of our city in a lot of ways. There's just so, everything going on in so many parts of our city, but we're excited. Thank you all, we really do appreciate it. And as far as City Sparks go, we're happy to accept money from anybody.
You know, why don't we do this, Julie? If we can get all the Rotarians in front of the dais here, we'll stand up behind them and maybe, and then you can hold up that check, please?
Yeah.
And then get a picture. We, you, go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote to accept first?
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Okay, wait, they got a, they got a.
Hang on one second, I jumped the gun again.
Controversial vote.
Okay. You just want to get back to work, Bill, I know you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, looking for a motion, please, to accept the $80,000 donation. Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to move that we accept the $80,000 donation from the Sparks Rotary Club.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Dare.
I'd like to second that, please.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thanks, Chris. Seeing none, please vote.
Donald saved me in the nick of time.
It passes unanimously. Okay, let's get that picture taken.
Should we jump?
Stand on your chair.
Yeah.
Down the table, Chris.
I'll go right here.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I gotta get back to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Gammick, I know you.
They'll get a speeding ticket getting back to work, please. We know how to clear a room.
When you do a check like that, that's, that's a lot of money for a little Rotary Club.
Okay, we'll move on to announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. 7.1, proclamation for Alpha One Awareness Month. Is there somebody here to accept this? Okay, I'll read the proclamation anyway, and I'll do a better job than Mr. Abbott did last year. I'm going, I'm gonna read all the words. Wait a minute, gotta clear my eyes here. You're gonna make me cry here. Alpha One is one of the most common serious, serious hereditary disorders in the world, and can result in life-threatening lung disease in adults and liver disease in both children and adults. And whereas Alpha One has been, has been identified in nearly all populations and ethnic groups, and whereas Alpha One is widely underdiagnosed and misdiagnosed, and fewer than 10% of those predicted to have Alpha One have been diagnosed, and whereas it is important to increase awareness and detection of this serious hereditary and misdiagnosed disorder, and whereas during the month of November, a nationwide awareness campaign will take place throughout the country to educate the public, as well as the medical community on Alpha One detection and treatment for those affected by this condition. Now, therefore, I, Ronald Lee Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 2019 Alpha One Awareness Month. So. I don't know why you had so many problems with that last year. Okay, we'll move on. 7.2, presentation of Nevada Gold Star Families. Come on down, chief. Sharon, Dave, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, Pete Croll, your police chief, here today with a special guest, Mr. Sharon Oren of the Nevada Gold Star Family Memorial. He is here to present us today with some photographs of officers and participants at the grand opening of the Northern Nevada Veterans Memorial Home.
Thank you, chief. First of all, there's also David Suze over here, who is my board member as well. On June 29th, we had unveiling of the Gold Star Family Memorial in the Veterans Home on 36 Ballabon Way here in the City of Sparks. Before the event, we had a couple of very important guests, where, besides our Gold Star Families, of course, which were two Medal of Honor recipients, Woody Herschel, the oldest living World War II Medal of Honor recipient, who started the project, as well as Donald Doc Ballard, who was Medal of Honor recipient from Vietnam. As always, and I want to say because it's not taken for granted, City of Sparks was there representing with their mayor, city council members, like in every veteran related event that we've been part of, which is amazing to see you guys there. And also, we had a lot of help from City of Sparks PD and Fire, who were there on their own time and dime, helping us, keeping everybody safe, and representing the City of Sparks and honoring our Gold Star Families. For that, we want to thank you today. And David and I made one for the Fire Battalion. Donald Doc Ballard actually dedicated and signed it for you, as a thank you for the, I know the fire chief is here, I think I was only a second ago, want you to come over here. And we also have one for the PD, same thing, signed and dedicated by Medal of Honor Doc, Donald Doc Ballard. And as a small token of our appreciation for what you guys do every day for your community, for your veterans, thank you for what you guys do for us and for the veterans in this. And since the Rotarians already left, but I know someone's still in the room, we're still looking for donations for the memorial, just saying this. Oh, definitely.
Does he have a presentation? No presentation. Thank you. Good seeing you guys, thank you. Thanks for your support. Okay, 7.3, presentation, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Come on down. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me here this afternoon. My name is Jessica Forbes-Garrero, I'm with Ecology and Environment Incorporated, and we're working with the county and regional partners to update the regional hazard mitigation plan. Like I just mentioned, this is a regional plan, so it's Washoe County, also the City of Sparks, City of Reno, Reno Sparks, Indian Colony, and the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, as well as the Chucky Meadows Fire Protection Districts, the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, and then the Chucky River Flood Management Authority, all working together on this plan. And if you've ever been involved in a hazard mitigation planning effort before, you know these plans are updated on a five-year cycle. They're necessary to enable the community to be eligible for pre- or post-disaster hazard mitigation funding, but it's also the commitment of the community to take solid steps to reduce risks from hazards for residents and for property within the city. So this plan, the major push of the plan is to develop that mitigation strategy that consists of concrete actions. The planned vision and the planned goals are all targeted towards that mitigation strategy. So these are, let me back up and say, at the beginning of the planning process, we worked with the mitigation planning team, which consists of representatives from all the regional partners working on this plan, to identify hazards that affect the region, and also rank those hazards according to different parameters. So you'll see along the top row of that table, probabilities, so the likelihood that a hazard is going to occur, a hazard event, magnitude, the severity of that event or disaster, frequency, how often it's likely to occur, the onset is how much warning you have before something occurs, and duration is how long something lasts. And so you can see, these are our ranked hazards for the region. There's not a whole lot of surprises, I mean, you'd see, expect to see wild and fire, flooding, earthquake up at the top. We also looked at man-made hazards, so criminal acts and terrorism, or things like transportation incidents, and then technological hazards, so energy emergency, more like power outages and other energy emergencies. In our data collection process, we relied a lot on the expertise of staff, so representatives of your cities and also the fire protection districts, people who are on the front lines of responding to and recovering from disasters, to let us know where these problem areas are, what areas are at risk. We also had an extensive mapping process of gathering information from federal, state, and local databases, in order to map where these hazard areas are. And then through meetings like this one and community discussions, we've been gathering information from residents, local residents. And then our process of identifying strategies. So we started, like I mentioned, with this data collection effort, understanding the hazards that affect the region and where these hazards occur. And then, once we had that understanding, we were able to identify problems that needed to be addressed. So, and through identifying those problems, we developed actions to address those issues. So for Sparks, for example, a lot of the development has occurred in North Sparks recently over the past few decades, in the Spanish Springs Valley. So two problems that were identified were response time for fire protection, and then also evacuation. So two of our strategies then are to build an additional fire station to bring those response times down, and then also to come up with an evacuation plan. There are also strategies in Sparks Annex to the plan, so that annex that is specific to the city, dealing with flooding, dealing with earthquake hazards, and other hazards that have been identified as priorities for Sparks. And right now, we are in the process of putting together the draft plan. So our mitigation planning team is reviewing that plan now, and then in November, the draft plan will be released for public review. And at this point in the process, that's the best way to get involved, is to take a look at that plan when it's put up for review on the county website. We also have a community survey, there's the link right here, and absolutely feel free to take that community survey. And then my coworker, Alyssa, and I will be outside the chamber here for about half an hour after this presentation. If anyone has any questions they'd like to talk to us about, and we'll also leave some comment forms out there. So if anyone has any written comments they'd like to send, feel free to please fill out one of those forms, and my email is on there, you can send that to me.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Dare?
Does this help us if, say, we have one of these when it comes to FEMA or any of this insurance things? The fact that we've done all this pre-work, do we have any kind of grant money that we get, or is this a fed, does this help us federally? What, where does this come into play, and how does FEMA use any of this, or do they?
Right, so these hazard mitigation plans are requirements to be able to access that pre- and post-disaster mitigation funding. Yeah, so this is kind of like your, your ticket in, if there were to be a disaster, and certainly we hope that doesn't happen, but this would show that, show FEMA that the city has done that baseline step of planning for hazards and identifying those projects, and that you have identified solutions to these problems to kind of let them know that you'll be able to manage the money.
Is there a certain amount of people you need to have through that, or just the fact that you have it? And I say that, do we need to help get this out to make sure we have enough people out of the City of Sparks to give you a survey, or how, how are we all there?
Yeah, so there is, there are requirements for the planning process, and the city has had representatives at each of our mitigation planning team meetings, and so that's really what FEMA wants to see, is that the city has been involved throughout the process. So certainly, as part of that documentation, we'll document any comments that we get on the draft plan. So to show like a robust review at the city level, that would be good. So yeah, if we do receive comments from anyone at the city, we'll include those in our record of the planning process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbott? Is this a new plan, or is this an update to?
This is an update. Yeah, so this 2020 plan updates the 2015 plan. I know there was a 2010 plan, and I'm not sure what iterations may have come before 2010.
So like, those numbers that we looked at in the very beginning, are those based off current, like, I guess, how do we get those numbers? And are we getting better, or?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Let me see if I can, oops, go back. No, yes, okay. It's just gonna take me a minute. So those numbers are responses from members of the MPT, so they aren't objective, per se.
Okay.
They're based on professional experience. And you do see over here the change in risk. So this is kind of the perceived change in risk over that five-year period between 2015 and now. And so you see in some areas, like wild and fire, risk has increased, which you might expect because of increased development. Flooding has increased, but winter storms, things like that have decreased. And we do identify factors in the plan that have contributed to an increase or decrease in risk.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. 7-4, 7-5, and 7-6, Neil, you want to read all three of them?
Yes, sir. 7-4 is three vacancies that we have on the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. All three vacancies are for alternate positions. The first two are in wards two and three, respectively, with both terms, I'm sorry, in wards two and four, with both terms ending in November of 2022. And the middle position is in Ward Three for an alternate member that would fill a partial term ending in November of 2020. We're looking for members that are residents of the City of Sparks, can be anywhere in the city. We're certainly, in their ideal conditions, each of those positions is filled if you're a resident of that ward, but it's not strictly speaking requirement. We're also want to include, encourage high school students to, to participate. This is a great opportunity to, to get involved and learn about what's going on in the city. 7-5, the second one is the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, and we're looking for two alternate members there. One from Ward Five that would fill a partial term ending in November of 2020, and one in Ward Two that would finish a partial term ending in November of 2022. Applicants need to be resident of the City of Sparks and should preferably be over the age of 55. And then last but not least, we're looking for two members to fill partial terms on our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Both terms would end November 6th of 2021, and in terms of requirements, we're looking for people with a performing arts background or a visual arts background. For any of the seven positions that I reviewed today, you can, you would need to complete a community service application that's available either from the city clerk's office or online. If you want to access it online, you would go to the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us, click on Government, then Boards and Commissions, and Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, fill out the online form, and click Submit. Applications for the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee meeting and the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee meeting are due by the close of business on Friday, October 18th, and then for the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, those are due by the close of business on Friday, November 1st.
Thank you, sir. Okay, move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I'd like a motion to accept consent items 8.1 through 8.4.
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Anderson?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, 9.1, consideration possible acceptance of a traffic safety grant in the amount of $46,000 to participate in the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety 2020 Joining Forces Program. Chief Croll, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Smith, members of the council, Pete Croll, your police chief for the record. Today, the agenda item I have before you is consideration and possible acceptance of a traffic safety grant, AC 5616, in the amount of $46,000, to participate in the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety Joining Forces 2020 Program. For approximately the last 16 years, the Sparks Police Department has participated in the State of Nevada Office of Traffic Safety Joining Forces Program. This national award-winning program focuses on, excuse me, focuses on the state's participating agencies on cooperative enforcement during predetermined traffic enforcement events. You know these events typically as things like Click It or Ticket, or specialized DUI enforcement campaigns. According to 2017 statistics, speed contributes to one in every three fatal traffic accidents in the state of Nevada, and alcohol contributes to approximately one in every 3.5 fatal traffic accidents. If accepted, the $46,000 grant would pay for 824 hours of officer overtime to conduct targeted traffic enforcement. Of course, as always, the council has options, and the council can either accept the grant and participate in the Office of Traffic Safety 2020 Joining Forces Program, or could decline the grant and seek funding elsewhere. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson? Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
We have a motion. A second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, you're on 9.2 as well, chief.
Yes, sir. Once again, Pete Croll, your police chief. Mayor Smith, members of the council, this next agenda item before you is consideration and possible approval of an inter-local agreement, AC 5612, between the City of Reno, on behalf of the Reno Police Department, Washoe County, on behalf of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and the City of Sparks, on behalf of the Sparks Police Department, for management, for the management and disposition of the 2019 Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG, program award. The U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, is offering a 2019 Justice Assistance Grant Program Award collectively in the amount of $159,075 to the Reno Police Department, Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and Sparks Police Department. The Sparks Police Department's allocation of funding would be $31,815, and Washoe County and the City of Reno would each receive $63,630. The inter-local agreement identifies participating agencies within the grant, establishes the City of Reno as the fiscal agent and responsible party for all grant reporting during the program, period of October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2022. In addition to the inter-local agreement, JAG is requiring certifications and assurances by the chief executive of the applicant government to be signed by the mayor as part of the application process. If accepted, the funding breakdown would break down as follows. Approximately, excuse me, exactly $30,860.55 for law enforcement equipment, and $954.45 for personnel costs and overtime for training on NIBR's compliance. The law enforcement equipment that would be purchased would be replacement of rifles for our Special Weapons and Tactics Team, as with any tools and equipment, things eventually wear out and need to be replaced, and we would be seeking to do that. The second part of that, which takes a little bit of understanding, is the overtime for training on the NIBR system. If you're familiar with the uniform crime reporting methodology currently used by the FBI, that will go by the wayside in the near future, and we will be participating in what is called the National Incident-Based Reporting System. The key component of that is this, under UCR, in each criminal event that takes place, only one crime is counted. So for instance, if you have a robbery, but yet there are several other smaller or, or perceived less important crimes that occur in that event, only the robbery is counted. Under the NIBR system, each event, each crime within a particular event would be counted. The importance of that is this, it may appear in the coming years that a large leap in the amount of crime that occurs everywhere, not just in the City of Sparks, but nationwide, will appear to have gone forward geometrically. That's not necessarily the case, it really is simply just an accounting methodology. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions or comments for the chief? Okay, seeing none, look for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the inter-local agreement, AC 5612, with the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks for the management and disposition of the 2019 Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. Good job.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Chief, when will this take effect? Once, once you get the money, and then how long after that?
This is, this is actually the first phase of the project, so we need to sign on to the inter-local agreement before the grant can be applied for.
Okay.
And when that occurs, we will bring that, of course, back to the council at the correct time.
Okay, great. All right, we have a motion. A second, any further discussion? Passes unanimously. It's okay. Okay, 9.4, Chris Cobb, consideration discussion, possible authorization for staff to seek additional grant funding from various foundations in the estimated amount of $220,000 to assist in the design and construction costs of the Sparks Marina All Abilities Playground.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and please, before you be here again, for discussion and possible consideration to allow staff to seek additional funding, and the amount around $220,000 for the full design and construction of the All Abilities Playground at Sparks Marina. The estimate is.